Sorry I'm late. Man, what's all this mess up here? Oh, sorry. Welcome everyone, I would like to remind you that we are streaming live on YouTube tonight, so all mics are live. Anything that might happen will be presented wherever YouTube goes. Okay, City of Castle Hills, May 9th, 2017. This is a regular city council meeting at 6:00 PM. City of Castle Hills, 209 Lemonwood Drive. I call this meeting to order at 6:04 and determine whether a quorum is present. Quorum is present. We started the invocations here at City Hall, so Kurt, thank you for getting the different pastors in our local area to get involved in this, whether it be Wayside or St. George, or whoever it is, all of them have volunteered to, from time to time, be our guest invocation. So with that said, Father Romero Lopez from the St. George's Church will lead us in the invocation. Thank you Father.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, let us pray. Gracious God, you pour out upon all of your beloved children your grace, your mercy, and your love, and you give us all the capabilities to serve you and to serve each other in all of our various gifts. May we always look to you as our guide. May we always look to serve you and each other. May you hold us together with your love and bonds of goodwill. And we pray now that you would send down upon those who hold office in this wonderful city of Castle Hills the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. That with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. May we ever be mindful of and responsive to the needs of others through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you Father Lopez. Okay, next we have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask one of our own, Mr. Hart, to lead us please. That's Sergeant Hart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Sergeant Hart. Okay, tonight we have under item two, a couple of acknowledgements and recognition. First, I'd like to recognize Chief Darrell Dover as the Castle Hills Fire Chief. Darrell? I'll wait on that. Okay, next, boy, this is a real honor. We get to congratulate St. George Episcopal School again for winning, I don't know if you know, but they actually do a float in the Battle of Flowers Parade, and it's quite a float, I'll tell you. It was something else. We don't have a picture of it, do we? All right, next time we will. Thanks. Maybe, I mean, if we can get one. Okay, so I'd like to recognize St. George, because they won first place in the Battle of Flowers in their class. Oh, he did, he did. Did you work on that float?
No.
What, you wrote on the float? Wow, that's nice. And your name, please?
I'm Shelley Roat.
Hi Shelley.
I'm one of the coaches.
Michael Myers.
Hi Mike, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
What we do here when someone, oh, come on, here you go. Okay. From the Office of the Mayor, City of Castle Hills, this is a proclamation, whereas St. George School annually participates in the Battle of Flowers Parade and historically gets selected as a winner of the civic and educational category, whereas the second graders with St. George Episcopal School put forth outstanding teamwork to create and build a float for the Battle of Flowers Parade, whereas students, faculty, and staff designated the first-place award-winning float on that theme, trailblazing literature. Green Eggs and Ham. There it is. Wow. I remember reading that myself, anyway. Whereas St. George Episcopal School is known for their academic learning environment, character development, and fostering citizenship, whereas the City of Castle Hills commends the students, faculty, staff, and parents for preparing the leaders of tomorrow with an education that extends beyond academics. Therefore, I, Timothy A. Howell, Mayor of the City of Castle Hills, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 9th, 2017, as St. George Episcopal School Battle of Flowers Ambassador. Let's give them a hand, everyone. Paul, do you want to accept this, or would you like the...
Please present it to Shelley, who's the one, and Mike, both work so hard coordinating all the parent volunteers, so we'd like to recognize them for their great work, and if you could present them, that would be outstanding.
Shelley Roat.
Okay, Shelley Roat, I would like to present this to you, signed by myself, and with gratitude from the City of Castle Hills, and would hope that you would put it in a place where people could see it there at St. George, because we'll be looking forward to seeing it again next year, and you're listening.
Michael Myers.
Michael Myers, thank you very much, also. Do we get a picture here, Joe? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. There's a lot of, a lot of...
Okay, boy, what an honor that was. Okay, Kim, do we... Okay, there's one sheet signed up tonight. Excuse me, there's one person signed up on Citizens to Be Heard, and since we have a rather small crowd tonight, will, if there anybody who did not sign up, please let me know after Judy Crawford speaks. Judy?
I'm so excited to follow Dr. Seuss. After 31 years of doing Dr. Seuss every year for first grade, I'm thrilled. I know you all can't vote tonight, but I would like the city to consider, I would like to sponsor a little free library for Castle Hills, and so I wanted to put the information in your hands, and I think you might have got it in your packet. I want to do it in honor of my husband, Robert, for his birthday, who is the most prolific reader you've ever seen. We would name the library after Castle Hills, though, he doesn't want his name on it, but that's who it's for. When we register it, it'll be placed on a digital map that is along with little libraries all over the world, so people can go online and see where the maps are located, and they'll see Castle Hills on there. I attached the library that we'd like to purchase and the post that it will sit on, and I intend to pay for all the cost. I would like for Rick's department to install it, so we know it's safe and secure, but I'll pay for that too, so your time and the materials to do that. He picked a library that would have two stories, so that some children's books could also go on there, and I'll be checking it like every week or so to make sure that it's up to, you know, being kept up, and people are taking care of it, and that there's plenty of books in there. This library actually comes with $100 worth of books, I don't know what quality they are, but I can tell you Rob has a lot he could donate, so if they're not good, we can put some of his, I know the mayor has some too, so we could do that. I can also buy brochures that we can hand out at the city that explain, it's take a book, leave a book, so if you're finished with a book, you can leave it in there, and a stamp that will say Castle Hills Library on it. So I think it's a real positive for our community, and I leave it up to y'all to pick the location. Somewhere in the Commons, but wherever you want, so I would appreciate y'all considering it. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Unfortunately, this item was brought up under Citizens to Be Heard, which we cannot respond on, but Kirk, would you please, we are lucky in that when we founded the Rules of the Commons, I think Mr. Brennan, you were involved in that, we are the only city in the Metroplex area where the mayor has control over the Commons. Yeah. And decide what goes in there and goes out, so would you get with Ms. Crawford and work that out, so we could...
I will Mayor, and I want to apologize to Ms. Crawford, because we talked about this a couple of months ago, and we should have put it on the agenda, it just slipped my mind, so...
Well, don't worry, we'll have something else coming up, I bet.
I think it's a great idea, and I'm really looking forward to it.
I think we'll have something coming up about that. Well, thank you, thank you again, Ms. Crawford. Okay, that was the only person on Citizens to Be Heard, and is there anyone else that would like to say something that is a non-agenda item? Okay, thanks. All right. We're going to move into the consent agenda, and I will be pulling item A on that until our next meeting, due to the fact that we need to do that, okay? On item B and C, is there anyone who would like to pull any one of those items for discussion? Okay, then we'll bring forward the consent agenda under item four, which is consider the acknowledgement of the receipt of the 2017 first-quarter investment report, and consider approval of the April 2017 Treasurers Report. Do we have a motion, please? We have a motion for Mr. Paul, do we have a second? Mr. Gregory, thank you very much. Okay, with that said, that passed, thank you Counsel, we're moving on to item five. Yeah, let's go ahead and vote on it, just to say we did. So, all in favor? Five, thank you very much. We'll see normally when it's not pulled off, and it's, okay, good. Thanks guys, for reminding me of that. Okay, item five, let's consider reappointing Judge Harold McCall as the Castle Hills Municipal Court Presiding Judge, and appoint an alternate judges to preside during absences of the presiding judge.
Make the motion Mayor.
Okay, let's make a motion, then we'll go into discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Squire?
So move on your motion.
Okay, Matt, we have a second on that. Discussion, Mr. Trevino?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Daggett, did you have any questions or comments on the item on the table? Thank you, Mr. Squire.
Yeah, I have a question. On the agenda item, it also refers to appointing alternative judges to preside during the absence of the presiding judge. Do we have a listing of those alternative judges at this point?
I haven't been, I haven't been given one.
We do, we have a curriculum vitae for Richard Loza. Does Counsel have that in their package?
Yeah, it's not going to be in their packet, it's going to be one of those documents I put to the side of your packet, and it's a resume.
And Judge McCall is here tonight, if we wanted to call him up, and you wanted to ask him any questions about the alternate.
Hang on just a second. Did you have a question for Judge McCall, as far as the second judge?
Actually, yes I do Mayor, thank you for that. Judge McCall? Have you worked with this, Mr. Loza, as an alternate judge before?
Yes, he's actually a judge in Natalia, and I serve on a couple of boards with him, he knows the parliamentary procedure, but the biggest thing that I would like to have is, I'm usually here, I miss maybe once or twice a year, maybe, but trial days, I can't because the people we have appointed right now, they're not comfortable with the trial stuff. He's a trial guy, he works for Rio Grande Legal Aid, he does some stuff, and I would also, I'd like to have three, just in case. Mr. Bruceno, that we have before, he'll show up on regular presiding days, and he does a good job for trial work, Mr. Loza, and he can handle the regular docket too, and then we had a prosecutor here, when I first started, we brought him in to try jury trials, and his name's Matthew Gossett, and I'd like to have him as a backup too, that way I'm covered, if something happens to me, I know that I don't have to worry that we can have everything handled, so.
Can you repeat the three alternative suggestions again, please?
Richard Loza. Al Bruceno. Which is currently one of my alternates now, and Matthew Gossett.
Okay, thank you. As a, Mr. Brennan, the alternate judges aren't specifically spelled out in this agenda item, do we need to specifically add them?
You'll need to include them in your motion, because you're right, their names are not in here. And you all have to approve them.
Sorry, can you repeat that, please?
Okay, their names are not in here, so you'll need to specifically include those names in your agenda, I mean, in your motion, as alternate judges.
Typically, in the past two, I've had a couple, they don't, you know, I think they got the position, but they don't, they don't show up, and I had asked the, Kim, and a couple of councilmen, if I could appoint people that I know that will show up, that will show up for me if I need them to come, and that I can trust, because ultimately, if I'm the presiding judge, it's my court, and what happens in here kind of reflects on me, so I'd like to have a little control over who's here, so I know that everything's going to run smoothly, and I don't have to worry about, you know, any kind of issues.
But what you're saying is, is a case, is currently in place right now, no matter what alternate judges are appointed, that's, that would be the current practice and has been the current practice, is that correct?
Right, right, because under the general law city like we are, the presiding judge sits, and the alternate sit, if he can't come in, in his absence is what it says, right? So if I can't come in, I just wanted to be able to have somebody that comes in that I can trust to, you know, do things right.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'd like to ask a general question, to have these three gentlemen, have they been notified and have agreed to serve as an alternative judge?
Yes, yes.
They have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to this agenda item, to, the amendment will be to appoint Mr. Bruceno, Mr. Gossett, and Mr. Loza as alternative judges to preside during absences of the presiding judge.
So Harold, you wanted all three?
It can't hurt to have three, I have two now, and it's kind of puts me in a bind with, if they, if they don't answer the phone, then I'm like video magistrating in the airport.
Hey Harold, I want to ask a real quick, thank you John for that motion, I want to ask you real quick, so...
Sure.
If we move forward, not to get into a lot of detail, but if we move forward with this court of record, will that have anything to do with this, but you'll be over them anyway?
Right.
Because you'll be over the whole court and the employees.
That was part of my pause too, because court of record, you have a lot more power, right?
There you go.
To do certain things, and the attorneys have to be a lawyer.
Good.
And I would like it to be lawyers that I know, that know the procedural issues that may come up, and I trust those guys.
Great. Mr. Squire, will you repeat your motion again, in case anybody forgot?
I move to amend the existing motion, appointing, let me see here, to appoint alternative judges, Mr. Bruceno, Mr. Gossett, and Mr. Loza to preside during absences of the presiding judge.
We have an amendment to the motion, we have an amendment to the original motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's all in favor of that? We need a vote on the amendment? All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you, it is amended to the original motion. Thank you John. Mr. Paul, did you have any comments or questions regarding this item on the agenda, please?
Yes, I'd like to know, Judge, if you're not going to be here, do you make the determination who you're going to call first, or does the office do that?
No, I do it.
Good, because you know basically the court, court procedures, you know what's coming up a lot of times, and so you might be able to fit the right shoe, if you will.
Right, if it's a presiding day, I'll probably ask Mr. Bruceno if it's a trial day, it'd be one of the other two, for sure. Whenever I go out of town, I notify dispatch and my clerks, and then that way they know if like a magistrate situation comes up, and they can't get ahold of anybody, then they'll get ahold of me, and I'll do it via video.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Gregory, do you have any questions for the judge, or anyone else on the agenda item, please?
Looking at Judge Loza, he's a member of just about everything that's in existence in Veracruz County, but the thing that struck me was he's Alpha Chi National Honor Society. Now that is extraordinarily hard to get into.
He's a member of every, he's a very bright guy.
That just blurted out to me, and he did this 30 years ago, and that's even harder. That's before you could go to the internet and buy your term paper.
Right, right.
So I think this is, that's a remarkable thing right there.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you Judge.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a passed amendment to that motion on the table, we have a motion and a second on the original motion, so with that said, all in favor? It is unanimous, thank you Counsel. Okay, let's move on to item six, which is consider and act upon the recommendation from the Architectural Review Committee regarding an application from Antonian College Preparatory High School located in 6425 West Avenue, legal description CB 505A Block 8 Lot 1, for the proposal, front interest stair of the Antonian College Preparatory Center for Academic Excellence. We have a presentation here, so Mark Markowski and Kathy Walker, Director of the Advancement, to be providing a presentation. Do we need to open a public hearing before we do that? Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Okay, can we have those two come forward, please? If you could state your name at the microphone, thank you.
Is our presentation still in the computer?
Ladies and gentlemen, while the think pad is thinking, I want to thank everybody for coming out and voting this, and exercising your right to vote. We had another, might have been a record, I'm not sure, we're still looking at the numbers, but whether you're a candidate won or lost, we want to thank you for coming out and exercising your right to vote. We have a unusually large percentage where we, I think, what, 30%, 35% Castle Hills, so. Pretty high registered voters. Now don't anybody hold me on that, okay?
Good, we are back to normal. Thank you Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Mark Markowski, I'm the architect for Antonian High School, Representative Markowski plus associates, and, excuse me, this is a picture of our overall site plan, this being West Avenue here, 410 is in this location, and the area we're talking about, the stairwell, is in this existing two-story building that was originally designed, the plans were dated June 18th, 1963, and it was designed for a priest residence that lived on this campus, that served that school and other functions in the Archdiocese of San Antonio. The original building was a two-story building, there were seven bedrooms on the first floor, 20 bedrooms on the second floor, for a total occupant load of 27 people. Couple of years ago, when we started looking at Antonian's master plan for a future campaign, we determined that this structure was still good in terms of components and bone structure, so to speak, had a long lifespan ahead of it, so we repurposed that building to become their Center for Academic Excellence, which is what it's being renovated to presently. The new occupant load of that building now will be 245 occupants, far greater than the 27 that was originally designed for 1963. This is kind of, again, a more of a zoomed-in site plan. This is the existing porch that's on that building now, it's about a 10 by 10 front porch, it's an integral part of the building in terms of structural attachment, and we're going to salvage that, that front porch and those front doors as we reintroduce this building for its new function. The existing stairs that are there now are off to the side, being a... since the 50s, has grown into the building, towards the building to gather some sunlight because the other trees have a large canopy and it's trying to seek that sunlight and so that becomes a head knocker on that existing landing. Again, another picture of the existing stairway. You kind of see the construction happening now, this is the new front doors where the current front doors were located in the original building. This is kind of looking down, the same set of steps going over to the original school. This is our proposed stairway. Again, this is the existing porch that's there now. This is the stairway with an intermediate landing and then the rest of the stairs down to the street level. Again, a metal handrail, like the one that's on there now. It's going to be a steel frame in terms of the structural component with concrete treads and landings to duplicate kind of the concrete treads that are there now. So that's kind of the plan of the stairway and those trees are kind of in this location right here. This was one of the more recent renderings of the front of the building. Again, that stairway kind of showing here. There are a couple of trees off to the left that are fairly good in size that we would certainly maintain those trees because they're not within the footprint of the stairwell, stairway, and that's kind of what that's depicting here in our presentation. These are the bollards that would be placed, two at the bottom, left and right of the bottom stair hitting the sidewalk and then at the intermediate landing, there'll be two of these placed also on the left, on the right, to illuminate the stairway coming up to the building. At the building entry or the top porch level, there's some existing, there's some fixtures on the building that would illuminate then the front porch for safety reasons. Again, the light fixtures are this type of bollard, they're LED lighting, they're just the little pedestal that you see there. Some more cut sheets on that there. This is just kind of a fact sheet in terms of the stairs being, you know, 10 feet wide and going back, I guess, to the site plan, which is kind of this plan here. So that's pretty much my presentation, that's what we presented to ARC last night. And if Kathy wants to step forward, if you want to kind of the second half of this, she'll talk about the tree portion of it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kathy?
While she's getting my presentation up, I just wanted to quickly go through some bullet points as to why we are proposing the removal of these trees. First, the grove of trees in question, as Mark has pointed out, are in direct path of the proposed new stairwell. As well, they do block the visibility of this very aesthetically pleasing building once it is completed. And also the trees, as Mark pointed out as well, several of them are growing into the building at this point. Keep in mind, this building was built in 1963, 64. At that time, the trees were very, very small, they were probably a diameter of about four inches and since that time, they of course have grown big and changed directions and many of them will continue to grow into the facade of the new building. And with that, we have replaced a lot of the front part of the building and so the trees will tear, will break into that facade and it will increase our maintenance issues and future expenses of maintaining this building. So this, and which it's in your packet, this particular photo right here, I did number the trees. This is up on the front stairwell landing and it's looking directly down into that grove of trees. So as you can see, those trees are in direct path of our proposed stairwell. The numbers, the trees are numbered from left to right. Tree number one, which is this one right here, is, is... Yeah, and then the next one is tree number two. Three, four, and five are actually three trees that began as three separate trees but were very, very close together. That is these, let me get this thing working, these three right here in the center. My battery's going, there we go, those right there. So those are three trees that, as I said, in 1960, 61, 62, they were about four inches in diameter, they have since continued to grow and they've fused together and they have one major main trunk on the bottom. So that's three, four, and five. Tree number six is the closest to, if I could draw a line of where the stairwell is right there, if I could draw a line. Yeah, let's use this one. Where the stairwell is right there, that tree right there is about four yards from that stairwell. And then the tree that's farthest is tree number five, which is that one right there, that's six yards. So they are very close to the building itself. Tree number seven, eight, they are also fused together and they have one trunk on the bottom. And tree number six is, I believe that's, I believe that's about 11 inches in diameter. The next exhibit, that is looking at the stairwell landing, it just gives you a different focus, but again, as you can see, the trees are in direct path of the stairwell. And there's another picture. The next set of pictures shows how the trees are growing into the building. That right there is the tree that Mark earlier described, that's actually tree number six. That's one trunk, that's not a limb, so that's growing directly into that building. There's another photo of those trees growing into the building and another. And that is a limb of one of the trees in addition to some of the foliage from the, from tree number six and that's directly over the landing. So that's the one that Mark said that if you were standing on there, if you were a taller person, you'd probably run into it. I also went around the campus and I had one of our parents count our trees. We actually have about 350 trees and that's just an estimate because we didn't go past the creek bed or any, and so, but just conservatively, we have about 350 trees. Over half of those are oak. That's a grove of trees right between the main admin building and the current renovated building. These are additional oak trees that we have. That's right before, that's on the outside of our football field. There's another photo of that. Those are heritage oak trees, those are right outside of our parking lot. There's a beautiful heritage oak tree and several more and several more and another. So we at Antonian have actually tried to conserve a lot of our oak trees. We feel this is a necessity for this, for this particular project and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kathy. Did, thank you both, we'll be with you in just a second. Frank, did you go to that committee meeting? Did you go to the ARC, I mean, to the committee? Douglas, were you there? Is anybody there? You were? Well, good, let me ask you a question then.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I did not attend it, but I did have a very specific discussion with the chairman.
Okay, let's hear it. Oh, wait a minute, let's get into, let's get into the public hearing first, okay? Before we actually get a motion and a second on the table, let's go on into a public hearing. It is now six forty-seven and we will enter into a public hearing. Okay, we have several people signed up for this. Did you want to make a comment before, we'll get counsel after the citizens, but did you want to make a comment since Mr. Joyce was unable to be here tonight, just to set the stage?
Well, as I understood it, and please, anybody correct me if I'm wrong, but it was, it was a unanimous decision by the ARC to provisionally approve this item. What I have a challenge with is what does provisionally approved mean? And so that's what was brought to us at this point.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brennan, before we get into discussion, and I'm going to probably steal somebody's thunder here, could there be, could there be special rules in the provision, however we do this, that for every one tree they take out, they got to plant two or something like that, small trees?
Mayor, I think you could introduce, I don't know if we have that in our code or not, but you could introduce it as a requirement. I wanted to point out that you have a report from Jack Joyce in your package. It's probably a separate sheet that Jack has provided that explains what the Architectural Review Committee recommends that counsel does with this, so.
Yeah, I saw it and it was pretty much what he said.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I was just curious, before we get into this and we start talking about what we're going to do. Okay, Douglas, would you mind starting off discussion on this? Excuse me, let's do the public first, as I said before, and then we'll go into the thing after that. Dr. Esdeno?
Hi.
Morning.
My name is Shada Dano, I live on 113 Fox Valley and I have a little presentation for you.
Yes, ma'am.
About the trees. They are beautiful, they've been there for, they are beautiful and they've been there for maybe over 100 years and I really, yesterday I was here and I don't think the pictures really, it shows the proximity of the trees to the building and I think they can build their staircase or whatever they want to do and they can save also the trees because they are just beautiful. Not only they're beautiful, they're beautiful for a long time, but also they can think about how much energy it will save them in the future. Okay, so this is how the trees, the distance between, okay, so let me point this one. No, 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 I'm just, the laser. So that is how the trees proximity to the building. As you can see, this one that is close to the staircase here, it's how far away it is from it. Yeah, it's, can I, okay, so that's where I'm standing and that's how far is it? And really, you can keep this staircase here and you can go into the building and the trees really doesn't do anything, really doesn't hit anybody, you can just trim the branches here. And again, that's another picture of the trees, how far from the building and going, they are very wide and there is a distance between, oh, why it's going, between the staircase and the building, so they can move a little bit here, they can widen the staircase to this side, to the building, next to the building, rather than going to the trees. Again, just between the staircase and the building. That's another picture, another picture also, how far away it is. And you know, when you look at Antonian, my kids went to Antonian, both of them, and you really, and this is the, that's Antonian, that is how people get into Antonian. The building is at the end of Antonian. So if you want to do something really nice, you really need to build the facade for this, the entrance of Antonian. I don't think you, you know, if you want to build a house, you don't do the garage nicer than the front of the house, really. So I don't know, what are they planning on doing? So we are for saving the tree, so, all the trees, not only one and two, because really there is no interference between the building and the trees. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, Jackie Ackley?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, everyone. I'm Jacqueline Ackley from 118 West Castle Lane. I attended last night's ARC meeting where this was discussed and then because it was still daylight afterwards, I went and did what I think is the most important thing and that's do a walk the property because it's really hard. Because it's really hard to grasp if you don't stand there and look around, and, and even with six eyes, we kept seeing things that the other one didn't see. I tried to summarize what I saw, but these pictures are wonderful, so I like to leave them up. I am, of course, in hopes of saving at least seven of these eight oak trees, which are large mature trees, one of which is thirty-one inches in diameter. In the packet last night, they each had each tree numbered and its diameter given, and I think the fused, what I call a triplet, is thirty-one inches in diameter. God's been growing these for eighty to a hundred years, and to plant a new tree somewhere else, or two new trees somewhere else on campus will not, except for a hundred years later, replace this tree. That's a long time. By walking the property, I saw and learned several things. These are my points. Seven of these eight trees are actually outside of that chain-linked fence to the very far left of the picture, uh, which is put up, I think, to separate construction site from non-construction sites. So they're, they're well removed from the building, they're not even interfering with construction. The one tree closest to the staircase inside the fence, if anything has to go, that guy's gotta go. But even that tree just makes an elbow that comes to the edge of this existing staircase and then goes up, as Shatha well demonstrated by standing at the top of the stairs, it does not interfere with anyone's head. No one has to duck or swerve to get around it. The very distant tendrils of the tree, the tiny branches, you know, quarter of inch in diameter, and the leaves are within three feet of the building in some areas. Surely, as trees grow, they will have to be trimmed. We all do that around our house. But they are not tickling, and I don't see that they would in the future scratch the building if they're just maintained. And maybe that one out of the eight goes away. What was interesting, and what we don't have a picture of here, is there was a colorful, uh, bullet billboard at the end of this construction area demonstrating what the project would look like when completed. And I believe that that, um, what do you call it?
Facade rendering?
Yeah, the facade rendering, elevation, good, elevation, is what probably was it submitted to, um, the bill, for a building permit. And in that picture, this is the staircase. There is no grand staircase coming straight out of the building. This is the staircase. That's what is on the drawing. That was evidently what was planned. So I think this grand staircase coming straight out is a later thought, one to add architectural interest and grandeur, but wasn't the original thought. So that's interesting. Last night at the ARC meeting, there was no consideration, nothing mentioned about, um, compliance with ordinances or for child safety. It seemed to be a, a visual thing that was desired. Indeed, walking the campus with Shatha, I learned, and it was depicted in their very first picture, that there is, behind this new classroom building, a little courtyard which is in front of the chapel building, and in between the chapel building and the big school building where the cafeteria and all the rest of the classrooms are. And most children, when they go to this building, would probably come to it from chapel, or the cafeteria, or the other classrooms, through that small courtyard, entering this building from the back. So although the number of student trips per hour is gonna go up from twenty-seven people having bedrooms here, to maybe two-hundred students having classes here, they have another door. And the, the other door will be the predominant one used, according to the mother who's had students on this campus for over sixty-eight year time period. This picture I also wanted to see, show you, and there were others perhaps a little bit more magnified that are good. The staircase that exists is, it's not going back for me. It's exactly four and a half feet away from the facade of this building. I pasted off. It's also about fourteen inches, the other way, please? Yes, it's, uh, four and a half feet there, and if we can go back to a little bit smaller picture of the staircase, it's some fourteen inches from the sidewalk. So it would be easy to expand this staircase, if you wanted to make a wider staircase for more people, by two and a half, three feet, uh, without even compressing onto the building, still leaving three feet between the staircase and the building for people who wanna wash windows, or trim trees, or whatever you wanna do. So, in summary, I think that this, the grand staircase that would come straight out from the building and necessitate chopping down trees is an afterthought, not present in the original drawings, and is meant for appearance, not for safety or for code compliance. There are other possible stair designs, such as a split staircase that could go around this elegant mott of trees, or expanding the existing floor that comes out with a curved pier, curved front to match the top that's curved above it, and then having a curved staircase come down in essentially the same locale as this current staircase. That would look architecturally interesting. It would be cheaper than a double staircase, but it would save the trees. So I would like if you could recommend either a different or the original stair design, and to preserve the trees, at least seven of the eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay. Uh, David? David Lewis? You're signed up for, uh, this item. Did you still wish to speak? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Amanda Mills?
I have a question.
Thank you, Amanda. Okay, there we are. We have a, uh, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this while we're, since we have a limited crowd tonight? Okay? Good. Four, for instance. Yes, Mr., yes, Brother Dooling?
I'm not sure I want to, but I'm not, there, I don't know which, where we're on the agenda we're talking about, 'cause there's two public hearings listed here, and we only have one. Are we doing it all together?
I think he combined the, the first and second items into one public hearing, 'cause they were presented together, even though they're on the agendas too. There's, there's two school applications.
I understand the presentation was done...
Yes, sir.
On that, but I don't know where we're at. I don't know many public hearings.
Mayor, didn't we just have, aren't we having one public hearing combined for both one and two on the school application?
Yes, it's on item, it's on item six, is, is the public hearing.
Six and seven together?
Six and seven, we can, why, do you wanna speak on seven?
Well, I, I, not really, this is what Jackie said. I think the stair design could be done differently, and it would surely look a lot nicer.
Can, come on up, Brother Dooling.
I mean, I, I, I'm not an architect, and, and don't know anything about that, but I know what looks nice, and a straight, what I would call a shotgun house staircase coming straight down has no architectural, architectural interest, other than the illusion of grandeur. But I think Jackie's idea, there's no need to cut down any trees. There's plenty of room for stairs, plus the fact, I'm not even sure they need an entrance there in the first place, but that's their design, you know, if they want. The students don't go in and out, it, they all come from the other side. It's not like the main entrance to the school. But if it has to be there, it certainly could be designed so as not to take out eighty to a hundred-year-old trees? That would be, and if that's what we're on, because it's both the staircase and the trees. And I think you ought to vote on them separately, but that's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Ken, come up here, please. Amanda, do you wanna come up and say something?
I didn't realize that y'all were combining the two.
We won't combine the two. We'll go ahead and do both hearings separate, okay? Why do we do that midstream? Okay, let's do this. We're gonna do this separate, 'cause it's on the agenda that way. Counsel, did you have any, uh...
So wait, is the, is it still, are we still able to speak on seven?
Hang on a second. We're gonna do this separate, okay? So the public is still allowed to come up and speak. Sean, do you wanna speak?
Oh, can I have some questions?
Thank you. I wanna make sure...
I'm so sorry. My name is Margaret Juarez. I'm one of the troop leaders with 307. We just have a couple of questions ourselves. One being, this is just new, this is part of our communication badge we're trying to attain.
Ma'am, can you lower the, we cannot hear you at all.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Margaret Juarez. I'm part of Troop 307. I'm a, uh, one of the troop leaders, and we have representation here today. They're trying to attain the communication badge, and we have a couple of questions. Okay. Um, one is, um...
Ma'am, just, just, just one moment. This is specifically for this agenda item, item number six, is that correct?
Uh, number seven.
Okay, we're actually on item, agenda number six, is that correct?
So now we, we separated, okay?
Yes, yes. Apologize for that.
Yes, we do. There seems to be some miscommunication up here.
Okay, then I'll come back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine. Was there anybody else who wanted to speak on item six, please?
Hi, my name is Amanda Mills. Um, I'm not sure what we're speaking on. I understand it's six.
Yes, ma'am.
But I think they're, I think these are so combined, it's difficult to distinguish. Architectural review, one of the purposes is to assure that natural features are appropriately preserved and integrated with the development. Conservation, issues to be addressed are conservation of trees and other natural habitat considerations. These are not small trees, and my question is, this is just for stairs? There are trees that are incorporated into Antonian's existing large parking lot that fronts Fox Hall Lane. They have both mesquite and oak trees. There are handicap ramps at both of the front stair areas that are in existence right now, both to this building and the front entrance of Antonian. I don't understand if there were no other additional site plans set up, such as were suggested by Jackie Ackley, for some stairs that would incorporate around the existing They could certainly, it appears, widen the existing stairs, sweep them into a new sidewalk, put in their additional handrails that are up to code, and not remove the trees. So I wish, and I'm sorry, that ARC didn't make stronger recommendations, but I certainly hope that City Council will ask for additional site plans for the stairs and not grant the tree removal in front of Antonian. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Okay, let's, uh, was there anybody else who'd like to speak on item six, please, in the open public hearing? Sean? Thank you.
Sean Timlin, 400 Fox Hall Lane. And as it stands on this agenda item, I am against the proposed staircase. I am for them having a staircase that meets requirement, but I am against the proposed staircase because of the removal of the trees in item seven.
Thank you. Mister, you, did you say you wanted to speak on item six again? Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify something that was discussed last evening as well, and it's brought up again here tonight, and i- it's a fair comment in terms of the student population, uh, the way this, most of the school flow is from the students, they will enter that back stairway if they're gonna stay within the bounds of the campus and behind the iron gates. As an architect, and as a designer, that's certainly a functional aspect of the back stairs and the back entryway. However, what, what has to be considered very strongly is, means of egress out of that building, uh, if there was an emergency, potentially a fire. The chapel is directly behind that building. It's the, if there was a structure fire in that chapel, which is the only building that surrounds that close by, those back stairs are totally, the back entrance is totally lawful limits, 'cause that's where the hazard's gonna be at. Therefore, the entire occupancy of that building have to come out that front stairway. We can, we can discuss the design of that stairway, it, you know, as, as, it's a healthy conversation, but I wanna make sure that we move the ball forward in fact that it's, it's not needed, it's not required, you have one anyway. It really is something on my mind in terms of safety mechanism to evacuate that building, and the safest place for evacuation is out the front door and, and some staging area if a structural fire were to take place in the chapel directly behind those back doors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, did anybody else have anything to say on the item six in the open hearing?
I'm not gonna talk about trees. I'm gonna talk about the comment of needing to have egress. So the only question I would have is, how much egress do you need? And that's, if we're gonna bring it up at this point, then we need to have calculations to tell us, you don't wanna get into a safety issue, right? So if you were to decide that you only need five feet, you find out it's against code, which I'm sure he knows what code is, then you'd, you'd be in trouble. So the only thing I'm gonna talk about is whether it's wide enough, and how wide is wide enough.
Thank, thank you, David. Okay, it is now seven fourteen, and we'll close the public hearing. Let's start to the right with, uh, counsel. Did you have any questions? Or do you wanna get a motion on the thing and then go into discussion? Yeah. Okay, let's get a motion on item six. Consider an act upon the recommend...
Wait a minute, did you, are we having the motion and then the questions?
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna go into discussion either way. Consider an act upon the recommendation from the Architectural Review Committee regarding an application from Antonian High School, Preparatory School located at sixty-four twenty-five West Avenue, legal description CB five zero zero five A, Block Eight, Lot One, for the proposed front entrance stair of the Antonian College Preparatory Center for Academic Excellence. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'm gonna second for sake of discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Gregory?
If we approve six, it makes seven moot, basically. That's the observation. I, I, it's a curious way they've been put on the agenda.
Unless there was a di, a design change, is that correct?
Well, if the, to take the design that they're, they're talking about, it's almost like a plantation stairway.
Right.
Which knocks down all the trees. So if you have the plantation stairway, you've already settled number seven. Anyway, I'd like to, to, the, a young woman who came up and talked about the architecture, the tearing down the trees draws attention to the building, and that was considered a plus. Not always is tearing down trees to draw attention to a building a plus. Trees enhance the aesthetics of a building. I found that out when I went to college at Duke, that all the enormous number of trees that were deliberately planted next to buildings enhanced the Gothic architecture of Duke University. They didn't take away from it. So I think the idea of simply bulldozing down trees to enhance the, draw attention to the building, sort of maybe misses the point. Second, um, what was the origi, the purpose of the original stairwell?
Mr. Moken? Yes, sir.
But you should know it.
The original stairway when it was a residence? Is that what you're saying?
The current one, that's the concrete stairs that, that vacate the building at the present time. They were put in how many years ago? Fifty years ago?
Fifty some odd years ago.
So the purpose of, that was to, to what?
Evacuate.
As you see it?
Evacuate the occupants when that was a priest residence.
So the, the kids are using that stairwell right now to go to another class on campus, or what are they using it for now?
That building, when it converted from a priest residence, turned into a retreat center for weekend retreats. It wasn't part of the school, um, camp, uh, program. The current plan, under renovations, is the first floor is a resource center, uh, three class, small classrooms, and a training room on the left side of the building. The second floor is all classroom space. They haven't, the students haven't occupied this building, um, until it gets renovated, 'cause they don't do retreats there, there's no classroom space in there, so the students don't go into the building presently.
Rather than having a flared staircase, as you find in plantation houses, if you had a horseshoe staircase where you have stairways going down from up either side, wouldn't that fit your purpose and you would retain the trees? wouldn't that fit your purpose and you would retain the trees? And it might actually cost less.
My guess, because of price per square foot, you know, two six-foot stairways, eight-foot stairways, ten-foot stairways is certainly more expensive than one ten-foot stairway, so, just based on forming material, concrete and steel, it probably would double the cost theoretically. So I don't think it'd be cheaper to double the stairway versus a single stairway. It's a design option, you know, I won't deny you the concept of doing something different to save the trees. And last night, the ARC proposal is to save three, three, four, and five, I believe if the numbers are correct, so, we're not here to say we're going to bulldoze the trees, that those three trees will stay, we'll modify our stairway to incorporate those three trees.
Which three trees are those?
I think it's on, I think ARC said three, four, five, it's the three trunk that came into one trunk.
It's a tree, it's a tree, John.
Right. And then tree, I believe, eight.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight aren't in our stairway anyway, so, we never was here to tear all the trees down. We were going to take, leave seven and eight in place, raise their canopy, and remove the other ones. And of the ones that remain, the pictures kind of show this, I think, perhaps, hers a lot better than maybe ours, and I think the number is number two tree and number six tree, and we discussed this last night, those are nothing more than a trunk, a limb, a trunk, out of the ground, grows up horizontal and turns towards sunlight. The only leaves on that component is at the top, this is nothing more than a single branch, so it's, as a definition of a tree, it is in terms of composition, it's got bark and limbs and whatnot, but it doesn't do much value in terms of creating beauty and canopy, for instance. The one that comes into above the stair landing is the same thing, I think that's tree six. It's a single branch trunk that comes up, it has some growth or some leaves, it comes up, it's hard bark again, and the top of it is kind of blooming to some more branches, or leaves, I should say. So, of the grouping, two of them are nothing more than a, I don't know if to call them a single trunk component, but, you know, of the eight that were there originally, after last night, we really are talking about leaving three, four, five, which is kind of one cluster, and, and-
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight, which is a cluster, so we're kind of only taking out three at this particular time.
To review, you just said you're keeping three, four, five, seven, and eight?
I think that's the number, so I don't have it in front of me.
Because what I have in front of me says you're going to take out three, four, and five, only leaving seven and eight.
Well, that was the original proposal, sir. The original proposal was going to leave seven and eight. We never were going to take out all of the trees. At last night's meeting, ARC came back and we compromised and said, yes, we could work with that, and we would keep three, four, and five, and again, seven and eight would remain.
So, we'll be modifying the recommendation on number, well, I guess, I guess when number seven comes around, we'll just, you only can remove one and two.
Right, it would be one, two, and six.
And what, and six?
And six. Six is the one that's closest to the building, it's the one that's just a single-
Yeah, I went over there and looked at those things today, tramped around there, and I have to admit, one or two of them aren't worth saving, because they are, one looks like it's about to, it's diseased, and I forget which one, I think that's one of the trees you're proposing to remove.
I think that's number two, that has no limb, no growth, some growth in the top half, that is just a stub, there's no vegetation at the top of that, I think it's tree number two.
So, to review from my mind, you do not want to remove trees three, four, five, seven, and eight. Only leaving removable trees, one, two, and six. I can see removing number two because that is simply just basically something that comes It is sort of a, this stairwell is rather remarkable, anyway. I think that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Paul, do you have any questions or comments for the item on the table, please?
Yeah, Mr. Architect, again.
Could you pronounce your name again, just so we know?
Markowski.
Markowski.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, that too.
Architect's fine, Mark's fine.
I hear, I hear the term heritage tree bandied around, all these are heritage tree. Now, your definition of a heritage tree is what, thirty inches, thirty-one inches? Or something else?
I'm not the landscape architect side of it, but what I was, what I hear a lot of people say is, you know, twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty kind of inch caliper of a tree, if I remember right, and I may be corrected, I think they measure the caliper of a tree three foot off the ground or something, as they're, you know, they don't measure at the base, at the ground level, they kind of measure it up or down type of thing, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make this simple, Mr. Brennan, I have a question, and it kind of follows along with what John said, asked. It says the ARC, the Architect Review Committee members thought that the architect could work a little harder and perhaps more creative to save a lot, at least some of the trees. And we've discussed that already tonight. Then, as John said, it says the ARC conditionally approves both parts of the application based on their review of working it over again. Now, there's nowhere in here, it says it approves it, there's nowhere in here that it says, I don't see teeth that makes it have to come back once they solve what the Architect Review has decided here. Where's the teeth? Who monitors this? How is this, you know, where's the beef?
Well, in my opinion, this recommendation is not helpful at all. It leaves you dangling and you don't know what's going to happen. In y'all's position, y'all have to decide whether to approve the application as submitted, to deny it as submitted, or to send it back to the ARC and let them reprocess these new designs and these new tree removals and the new study that they're talking about, because otherwise, y'all are up here trying, or somebody's up here trying to redesign this project-
Right.
-in a public hearing, and you can't do that.
Right, well, that's why I was looking at this, and I see the recommendation of doing X, Y, Z, and, and again, I don't see any teeth in it. So, the reality is, it seems to me like Antonian needs to follow whatever was discussed last night and come back to them and say, here's what we done, here's how we've solved the problem.
Yeah, that's exactly what y'all did with the project that was on the table, you know, a couple of weeks ago, you sent it back for reconsideration of an updated design or updated information or updated whatever it was, and I think that's where y'all are right now.
Well, in this particular case, they have documented what they think should be done, and fortunately, we have a couple of good architects on that committee, and, but again, I just don't see the teeth where it says, okay, you did it, show us what you're going to do. That's just my thoughts, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brennan, I need to ask a question, sorry, John, give me just a moment. What are the rules on timeframe and bringing this, bringing this up, and how fast can we get this done? Can a emergency meeting be called by ARC to get?
Well, they'll have to reconvene to consider whatever new proposal is made, and it comes back to you all promptly or quickly from that point.
Well, we have several meetings lined up in the next week or so.
Yes, sir.
So, if, if the ARC has given a conditional approval that says if the architect can come up with a reasonable solution that saves trees three, four, and five, and seven and eight, as they've proposed, the question would be, does it need to go back to the ARC if they meet the conditions that are specified by the ARC in their recommendation?
I see the attorney shaking his head, that's not good.
That's, that, you know, this conditional provisional leaves you down hanging, you don't know what, what's going, you know, what's going to happen. Yeah, they need to go back to the ARC and the ARC needs to make a clear recommendation to you all to consider.
So with that said, can we call an emergency meeting of the ARC, or is that within the rules of the?
There is a time span from the time that, you know, you get an amended application, I think, or any application before the ARC can act on it. The time was recently compressed a lot, so it'll be a compressed thing, but, you know, I would still think it's not going to get back to y'all for a couple of weeks.
Ten day notice?
Probably a ten day notice period.
June 7th would be the next ARC meeting, and it would be heard on June 13th at the City Council meeting.
Well, that could probably be compressed to some, that's their regular meeting, and I think they could have a meeting quicker than that, Mayor, as long as the proper notices were sent out.
Meaning, a week maybe, Mr. City Manager?
Usually, it's about a ten day notice period for ARC review of projects, isn't that right?
But we have the, I mean, the difference would be either call the emergency meeting and get it done in ten days, or just normally and get it done in fourteen.
Yes, sir, something like that.
Yeah, I'd have, I would have to check with the Chair to make sure I have a quorum, because obviously if we changed it from the normal ARC meeting date, I'd have to make sure that they're available on whatever date it is that we, that we change it to.
And we compress the time before, is that what we did?
We, it's possible, the Chair, the Chair could make that call, yeah.
And this presumes that they will, that Antonio, excuse me, will have something to present for the ARC within the ten days or whenever we have to leave.
I think they should, because they, you know, apparently they agreed tentatively, at least, with what the ARC discussion was.
Well, like you mentioned a while ago, or somebody did, this is awful compressed, the ARC met last night, and generally, there's at least a thirty to forty-five day span so that the process can play out, so this, you know, kind of a rushed up thing. Thank you.
Well, I've only been here for twenty years, I've never seen anything like this. So, do we, should we continue on and with, with questions or anything, or should we go ahead and make the table until they can do that?
Well, my view is you, y'all best table this thing and, or refer it back to the ARC for prompt consideration of revisions and conditions that they discussed.
Would you want to continue to go ahead and ask your question?
Just a few questions, yes, ma'am.
Sure, but why? You have to do it again.
No, just a couple of things, I don't know if we're considering or not, I'd like to make sure that, if indeed this is remanded back, that those may be considered also. Out of curiosity, was an arborist ever consulted to look at the health and the condition of the existing trees?
No, we didn't have an arborist, but we did have a designer.
I cannot hear a word you're saying.
Got people watching in TV land, too.
We were told that we didn't need an arborist, that, but that if we went to a professional landscape company with their designer to come out and do a platter, platter survey, which you have in your packet-
Okay.
-that, that would work, and so that's what we did.
That's what we did, okay.
So he came out and he drew the diagram and measured the trees and all of that.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I would like to say one point, I don't, there were several references of these being a hundred-year-old trees, and I don't really know where that came from, I actually have a photo of when this, when the Retreat Center was built, and there are, the trees that are in front of that are very, very small, you can barely see them trees, so, they're not a hundred-year-old trees. Granted, they're fifty years old or more, and I'm not making light of that, because that's wonderful, but I just wanted to clear the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Question for the architect, and since there was a, an effort to look at saving trees three, four, and five, did you have any designs that would show the revised stairwell to save trees three, four, and five? Do you have that, do you have, do you have that to present to council right now?
No, that was discussed last night.
Okay.
In terms of, we were going to keep seven and eight initially, and the recommendation was, and part of our dialogue last night was, you know, as a concession or compromise, could you consider saving, there was some strong favoritism towards that three fused piece.
Mm-hmm.
Can you think of something, I guess, to save three, four, and five, if that's what we need to do? I said, we certainly can consider that in our design by maintaining those, so-
Okay.
You know, in my head, there's some ideas going on, since last night we haven't put those on paper.
But at this point, you do not have a design to present to us that would show that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then you did acquiesce to the ARC that, that you'd like to try that to see if you could save three, four, and five, am I correct? Okay, all right. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. No more questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. In light of what our counselor said, would anybody like to interject a motion to go ahead and table this until?
I motion.
Thank you. Second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Okay, all right, all in favor? Oh, wait a minute, should we just put some provisions in there as far as speedy?
That's a great idea.
Okay.
I think the motion implies that it be, these meetings or the process be accelerated as much as legal.
Would you restate your motion, whoever did that, Matt, just to accelerate to whatever that means?
I'm going to restate the motion that we refer this back to ARC and speed the process as quickly as possible.
Thank you. You still on with that? Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
Mayor, is that going to be both, both agenda items, or is that just six?
Let's go ahead and do the second one. Okay, on item number seven, consider an act upon a recommendation for the Architectural Review Committee regarding an application for Antonian College Preparatory High School located at 6425 West Avenue, legal description CB 5005A, block eight, lot one, to remove six oak trees from a small grove of eight trees located directly in front of the freestanding facility currently under renovation and repositioning to the new, reproposing to the new Center for Academic Excellence. Can we have the same motion, please? Excuse me, can we have the motion that you would like to approve?
That's for seven also, right?
Thank you.
All right, make the same motion to refer this back as quickly as possible to ARC to-
We have a motion on the table by Mr. Daggett, do we have a second? Thank you, Douglas, all in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Can, can you, Kurt, make sure we, yeah, get with Kathy? Thank you. Okay, let's go to item eight, it's consider an act upon the recommendation from the Architectural Review Committee regarding the, an application from David Lewis regarding 105 Hibiscus Lane, legal description CB 5778 Woods of West West. Lot one C requesting the removal of an estimated amount of sixteen trees for the construction of a new home. David Lewis is here personally to present his application. Hi, David.
How's it going?
It's going great, thanks. Go ahead.
Is there a Spur score yet? No, just kidding.
No.
There's a, we made a slight change in that the Board of Adjustments granted a variance because we had the setback of fifty-nine feet, and that's the information you have. So I have a redrawn before and after, which is what I presented to the board last night, so they had the same thing, except yours is easier to read. So who do I get this to? So in bringing the house up to forty-three feet off the property line, I was able to save a forty-inch heritage oak and somewhere between two and four oak trees. They chose to make it four, which it probably will be. I think they changed theirs to recommending twelve trees instead of sixteen, which is fine, because I can, I can get- I think they changed theirs to recommending twelve trees instead of sixteen, which is fine because I can, I can get by with just twelve. We'll have some root shields and may have to do a little tree trimming, but the recommendation works fine for me. And as you can see, if you look at that, I tried to color code it, make it easy. The green is where the house is actually gonna be placed, somewhere between that and the black, somewhere between forty-three and fifty-nine, what either works the best, pretty close to forty-three. And then by moving it forward, I actually have the ability now because it's wider to be able to tilt a little bit left and right to get around any roots that I might get into or a limb that's going into the house. So there's a little leeway that there wasn't before. But the, the red dots are whatever color that is, that's showing you the trees that are in play. And the two in the very back left of the house, those get saved for sure. The one on the right-hand side is a heritage oak, it gets saved. The one in the middle, that's kind of in that little U shape in the back, that one stays. And then I've got the other two that there's just enough room, I believe, to move the house in between. So we're gonna be able to save more trees than the original plan.
Thanks, Dave. Hey, just so I know, I mean, so it's made clear, does everybody understand the second map? Okay. Good.
Hey, man, excuse me?
I think, I think what he's trying to do is make sure, when we, when we make a decision on his proposal, then he will make a decision on the house. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I thought. You know, we did learn something in the first grade, Dave.
I was in the closet most of the time.
Yeah, I know. He stole my girlfriend, so. He did.
That's where Mrs. LaGroen would put you if you were bad. She'd lock you in the closet.
I forgive you, David. Okay. Okay, well, let's do this. Go ahead and open the hearing. It is now seven, thank you, David. It is now seven forty and we'll open the public hearing. No one signed up, but since we have a roaring crowd out there. Jackie, did you have anything to say?
Quentin Baker, who was the owner before selling the property to the new owner for that home, loved the heritage oak. It's like, like four or five trees fused together coming out. It's just magnanimous. And the house has been moved, thanks to Board of Adjustments, forward so that that tree can be saved and some other trees can be saved. So he's brought down the number of trees to be removed from sixteen to twelve. I think he's done a good job.
Thank you.
Go with this, actually.
Thank you, Jackie. Anyone else? I think, Dave, I think that's one, there was a heart carved in that tree, wasn't, never mind, that's another story. Okay, folks, we've now entered into the public hearing and Douglas, did you have anything to comment on this, please? Uh, yes. Let's go ahead and close it at seven forty-one, please. Go ahead, Douglas.
We will be voting on the approval of the map in green or the map in gray?
Well, the, the recommendation of the ARC is to authorize him to remove twelve trees.
So is that the green one, di, diagonal, or the gray di, diagram?
Go ahead and answer for us, David.
It's, it's the green one.
It's the green one.
Green?
Is this what the ARC looked at and passed on was the green diagram?
Yes.
Don't you have to look at both? The blue trees are ones to be removed. The green, the red ones are gonna be saved in the revision.
I'm just looking at the diagram. Which of the two diagrams are we looking at for approval? And we're looking at the diagram that is in green, not the diagram that's in gray.
The, the first diagram was how it was presented and that's what you got in your package. And since they just approved it, the setback like last week, I drew another one up for the AR, for the Architectural Review. And that was the second page.
The green one.
Right.
But Douglas, on the first page, all the blue ones are gonna be the ones removed minus the red ones on the second page.
That's correct.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we motion, make a motion on this agenda item to, so we can have discussion.
Go ahead. A second? Uh, go ahead, John.
Wait a minute. To make a motion, I move that we make a motion. Well, it doesn't say anything.
We don't have, we don't have agenda items. We haven't, no, there's no motion agenda yet.
You said, the way you worded.
What's a motion then?
My, my apologies.
Well, why don't you go ahead and motion on the item eight and then we can adjust it as needed as we go, go through it. Is that right, Mike?
Oh, you're just having a discussion?
We can do that. But go ahead, John, let's go ahead.
Make a motion that we consider and act upon the recommendation for Architectural Review Committee regarding the application from David Lewis regarding one oh five Hibiscus Lane. Lot one C requesting removal of an estimated amount of sixteen trees for the construction of a new home.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you. Matt, all right. Douglas, you already spoke, which is fine. You can do it before or after the motion. Mr., you're good. All right. Mr. Squire, go ahead, sir.
Since I made, I made this motion, the Architectural Review Committee authorized the removal of twelve trees. In this motion, I saw sixteen trees. I'd like to understand what, why the, why the difference is. Can you comment on that, please?
Well, again, it's the difference between having to have the house fifty-nine feet back off the property line versus forty-three. And.
So what, what specifically are you requesting, twelve or sixteen trees?
I'm, I'm requesting now what the Architectural Review agreed to.
Okay, the twelve trees.
And I don't know why it said sixteen on yours, but I guess yours was printed before theirs last night.
Okay, great, great. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you on that. So, Mayor, I'd like to amend this motion to change it from sixteen to twelve trees.
Okay, we have a sec, motion and a second on the table. So what happens to the original motion in the second, Mike? Do we just kill it or does that go in as an amendment to override first?
I think what you're doing is replacing the first motion with the second. You never voted on the first one, but I don't think you really need to if you're replacing it with a new motion.
You don't have to vote on it?
I'm amending it from sixteen to twelve. That's all.
Oh, well, then you'll have to, if it's go, if it's an amendment, you're gonna have to go through two steps.
Okay, go ahead. Make the motion for the twelve, okay? We had a second on that, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Okay, Mayor, that disposes of the first motion. You don't have to go back to the first one at that point. I'm sorry.
Yes, we do. We're back on the original, Mike.
You, you don't need to. If, if the amended motion disposes of the first and the second motions, you don't have to go back. And it started sixteen, it, it passed at twelve, and you don't need to go back and turn down to sixteen after you approved the twelve.
Exactly right.
Okay, fair enough.
We really do know what we're doing up here, folks. We just act like we don't, okay? We had it all under control all the time. Okay, you're very welcome. Mr. Daggett, did you have any questions on the, on the item, please? Thank you. Mr. Trevino, did you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Looks good to me. Everybody else is quiet. Dave, hang on, we're about to get you a house. Okay, we have a motion on the table. We're not gonna have to read it back again just because we don't. And all in favor?
Mayor, what exactly are we voting on now? I thought we just.
We're voting on the motion that you amended from sixteen to twelve on the original motion, which was the one that you required, which was to allow him to go ahead and move forward with the plat that has twelve trees.
Okay. No harm in voting, Mike?
I, I, I think the final motion is to approve removal of twelve trees from that property.
Fair enough.
And it's voted on, it's over.
We already voted on that, so I think we're good to move on.
Good night, Dave. Go build a house, will you?
Kim, so that was unanimous, is that correct? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm gonna call Bernard. No, that was a joke. Okay. Let's, uh.
You're gonna miss me, Tim.
Yeah, I know. I already miss you already. I'm getting all misty-eyed. Okay, here we go. Let's go on to item number nine, which is street and the recommendations from the Street and Drainage Committee. Kurt?
I'll just stand up here, Mayor, if it's okay with you. I went in and pulled the slideshow. You guys have this in your package. The last, the backup slide has changed slightly. I talked with Suzanne. We got some new numbers today, so you've got those. But this is basically, the Streets and Drainage Committee met on May fourth, earlier this week, or, excuse me, late last week, and have a recommendation or a couple of recommendations to make to the council. Just to understand the process a little bit, we've been using our cartograph data, which is data that's been gathered over the last few years that captures the conditions of our streets. And so the last several Street and Drainage Committee meetings, we've been kind of shredding that data out and looking at what, what are the worst streets in the city of Castle Hills? What might the Street and Drainage Committee recommend to City Council for approval for a two thousand seventeen major construction program? And I'll show you a closer picture of this, but this is the section of the roadway that we have selected based on the overall condition index of the pavement. And that is a small section of Honeysuckle from Lujon down to Antler and then a portion of Antler from Buckaroo to Flintstone Court. And then if you notice this area in purple down here, that is what we are considering an add alternate bid. Just depending on what the bid environment is, if we get good bids back, we can also include this section of the roadway. This, this blows it up for you a little bit more. I've copied the scale of what the overall condition index rating means on the right-hand side. And as you can see, the, the overall condition index, thank you, for, for the stretch from Blanco to Buckaroo is sixty-four. And if you look at our, our, at our chart, that, that rates out as a fair. So that's, we're not even considering that. We have a lot of roads that are in a lot worse condition than this in the city of Castle Hills. And the way these OCI's are, they're broken up in, in pieces between roadways. So if you're observant, you'll notice that when you are driving down Honeysuckle, when you get to the end of it, the road conditions deteriorate drastically. And that's because there's some underground infrastructure here, both sanitary sewer and water lines that were not done in the last, in the last effort that paved Honeysuckle, which doesn't have that infrastructure. So, so we're gonna include this section here as well as these on the primary bid. The estimate for that work is five hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. Now, it may come in more, it may come in less. We won't know until we get proposals in. If the proposals come in lower, we will add this section in, which has an OCI of thirty-three point two eight, this purple section down here at the end of the road. So we're prepared to execute up to whatever the full budget is. And we believe right now we've got about six hundred thousand dollars that are remaining in the two thousand seventeen budget for streets work. So this section should, we should be able to accomplish this. And if we get favorable bids, we should be able to accomplish this, this section at the end of the roadway here. So, and that's pretty much it. We did do, one of the things that we've been doing is that the chief has REO Speedwagon, his speed trailer that he sets out there to help for traffic calming. And maybe we shouldn't say this in public, but it does a lot of data collection as well at the same time, one of which, one of the things it does is traffic counts. So we set it up on Antler over here primarily because we had some speeding concerns on Antler. But the traffic counts for that were roughly about a thousand cars per day. And the chief reminded me this morning that's going one direction. Not, so if you double that roughly, you're talking about two thousand cars a day going up and down Antler. Yeah, over a twelve hour period, yeah, I should say. That's just from six in the morning to six in the evening. So, and that was, that was one of the factors and one of the considerations we used in selecting this. So overall condition index, some of the lowest in the city. The amount of daily traffic on this is causing it to degrade very quickly. All you gotta do is drive it to see that. And then finally, there is SAW's infrastructure that's involved in, in this project. So Rick Harada and I went about, maybe a month ago now, Rick, and met with the folks from SAW's and showed them the projects, the roads that we were considering working on. And they are under a consent decree right now from EPA to get down to zero sanitary sewer overflows in the, in their service area, which is the greater San Antonio area by two thousand twenty-two, I believe. And so they're desperately trying to replace old sanitary sewer infrastructure. This is rated as E along here, which is one of the worst ratings. It's rated A through F. And F is just broken, you know. But E is multiple sanitary sewer overflows in a year's timeframe. Old clay pipe that's cracked all the way around, has some pieces missing. So they're very eager to jump into this. I know the last time we went down this road with SAW's, they weren't, they couldn't keep pace with the city of Castle Hills. But since this consent decree has come out, they're very eager to get this done. They've put processes and offices in place to institute this. They told us they could be ready for bid on this. Last month, they said by July, which means we could see this, now that we've delayed a, a month, if council approves this recommendation, perhaps getting the design finished on this in the August timeframe and could have SAW's work, the, the sanitary sewer and the water main work done as early as late fall, which means we could be paving as early as next year. So.
Kurt, so we understand that they're going to absorb a portion of this, the cost of this?
Yeah, they, and Suzanne can help me out on this, but on the interlocal agreement we did for the roadwork that's currently finishing up, the Castle Hills portion of that was about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I think, and SAW's was a million and six or something like that. I mean, it's, their part of the project is much more substantial.
Is that total or Antler?
Pardon?
Was that total or just for Antler, the million, whatever?
No, no, no. That was for the last program with Cromeria, West Castle, East Castle, Hurwick.
What are they gonna chip in for Antler? Do we know those exact figures?
No, we don't. We won't know that until they get the design worked on there.
And will that come off the five hundred, I mean, the six, the five eighty-nine or whatever?
No, this will be our cost. That'll be additive to it. And I think we've learned a few things going through the last interlocal, so we'll make sure we broker a good agreement for the city.
Thank you.
In addition, so that's, that's what's up for consideration would be to accept this as the two thousand seventeen candidate for, for design and construction for the city of Castle Hills. That will pretty much exhaust the budget that was set aside by council from, not just from the beginning of two thousand seventeen, but what was set aside in previous years that didn't get executed. So, so that would do that. Now, in addition to that, we've been challenged by the council, oh, come on now, to, to put together a three to four-year plan, which we've been working on. We, we have the framework for that done already and we have a number of candidate roadways again, based primarily on data from the road systems as well as SAW's involvement, as well as kind of the traffic data from that, what's gonna get the, what's gonna fail fastest. And so we're putting that plan together. But that's, that's this first bullet item right here, major capital projects. We also need to include in that some small minor construction projects. I think we're missing a little of that right now. That's been done in years past. But there's some, some things, you know, you've got your parking lot around your council building that's come up in past discussions. There's intersections. I think it's, I wanna say it's Glen Tower and La Kill Soma where there's a big change in grade when you're coming off of that, that probably needs some work. And there's just, just some small minor construction projects that need to be done around the city. And we need to come up with a list for that, as well as just your preventative maintenance. Rick has a good plan for every four or five years to crack seal, every four or five years. So he'd start in one quadrant of the city, one year, then move to the next and the next and the next, so that every four or five years they would come around and hit, hit the cracks on your street. That, this, this item right here, this preventative maintenance, is the key to a good, to a good roads program because it prevents the paving from failing prematurely. And they've, just in two thousand fourteen, they rejuvenated, I believe, about ten miles of roads here in the city of Castle Hills. And that extends the service life for that pavement. So it's not sexy, it's not big construction, but boy, it sure makes a difference in how long your roads hold up. And I, I gotta brag on Rick and his crew. I've had a couple consultants when we were going through the West Avenue consideration, which, which is still in the works, the, that went out there and looked at it. I asked them, what would you recommend for a treatment on those pavements? And they said, well, we don't know who did your crack sealing, but. And they said, well, we don't know who did your crack sealing, but they did a great job. And it happens to be Rick Harada and his crew over there with, with their in-house crack sealing. Um, so that's important. And then finally, um, we're gonna use Biscuit as the test car for the alley maintenance program. So we'll be able to drive it up and down the alleys, Mayor, if that's okay with you. Uh, but there's some recognition that we need to put together a program for repairing the alleys around Castle Hills, um, uh, so that'll be part of that overall three-to-four-year program.
Little, little Biscuit declines that, uh... Uh, Kurt, let me ask you a question. You know, I, when, when I was out, uh, I, I was unable to attend the last street meeting for obvious reasons, but I wanted to, uh, you know, I'm getting some, and I'm really, this is, this is serious. Rick, where are you? Oh, there you are. Okay. You know, we get these beautiful streets done, and I'm not complaining, I'm just bringing up an observation. We get these beautiful streets done, and then I, I had numerous residents say, why did y'all come in with that machine and put those lines on there? And, you know, we step on 'em when we're jogging and get stuck, you know? And, uh, is, is there any way we can do to, coin your term, make it a little more sexy?
We could use pink crack sealing material there. I'm just kidding. I mean, there's not really, it's, it's crack sealing. It's not gonna be sexy, and it is gonna be a little bit of a mess, but what it does is it prevents water from getting inside the pavement and causing degradation of that pavement. And it's, it's absolutely critical. And it does, it does remain tacky for a while, but eventually it hardens up and, uh, just provides, provides that nice solid coat. So Rick, do you have any comments to add to that, or are you happy with it?
If we were to seal coat it, wouldn't that hide that more? If we were to seal coat the streets that have had that done, wouldn't it hide that more and look better?
You could come behind it with a seal coat, and it would kinda camouflage it a little bit. It would still bleed through to a certain extent, and, and that may not be the best use of your resources, you know, uh, to do those in tandem. You may be better off sealing another street instead of cracks. And again, remember, we're gonna try to make a round around the city every four to five years where, where the crack sealing gets done, so you can't, you won't be able to get out there and, and every four or five years pave that series of streets. So, um, but it's, it's a thought.
Chief, on the, uh, kind of on a related subject that the city manager brought up, uh, the, uh, little trailer that we have is called Bubba or the Little Fella. Take your choice. Uh, do we have a, do we have a, uh, a calendar for that? Because I've been, you know, we've been asked, and then I kinda call you, and you get right on it, and then the next thing we have, have this, but, and I'm not...
We have an online, it's on our website, an online request form for REO Speedwagon. So any resident can submit a request for the trailer on their particular street. Um, that provides, pretty basic. Uh, they submit that, it makes it to Mary Bell and myself, and then we deploy the trailer in that particular area of interest.
Good.
Um, besides that, I randomly take the trailer out on days such as you may mention something about a particular street. I'll post it over there. I may send it to another place, uh, a week later. You know, I'm just collecting data from hotspots, if you will, for speeders in the city. In the meantime, and we have a pretty good list going.
What was the average speed on Antler? Do you remember?
Uh, less than thirty.
Less than thirty?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, so anyway, yeah, so there's an online application that the resident can request the trailer be placed in their particular area.
Can you send that, can you have Mary Bell send that over to my thing so I can put it on there and wake up eleven thousand people?
We'll do it.
Thank you. Okay. So we have... We have a proposal here. Kurt gave his, uh, thing. Do we have a motion for this item?
I move that we approve the recommendation from the Street and Drainage Committee.
Thank you. Second? Okay. Do we need to go into any kind of discussion, or are we ready to take a vote on this?
Let's vote.
Vote. Okay, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, council. Let's go on to item number ten.
Hey, Mayor, before we move off this item, I just wanted to once again recognize John Squire for his great work. I know this is his last council meeting. Um, he was the chair of the Street Committee and then the co-chair with Councilman Gregory for the Street and Drainage Committee, and, um, both those gentlemen have done yeoman's work in this regard. So just a nod, especially to John, as he's heading off into civilian life, so to speak.
I promise I'll keep this accolade under forty-five minutes. Uh, John, thank you, and Douglas, thank you. Uh, for the first time in the city's history, we have a drainage program. We have a, uh, San Antonio, we've got them looking at us saying they mean business when it comes to Carrollwood and La Kill Selma, that area over there, a completed program. And, uh, between John, the Street Committee, which you later came in as the, as the co-chair, and y'all are co-chairs now, uh, twenty-eight streets, twenty-eight streets, more streets ever, and it isn't me, believe me, it's these guys right here, and, uh, the hard work and the, uh, whatever, twenty-eight streets completed, repaired or replaced or milled. Let's give 'em a hand. Thank you, gentlemen. I hope I live to see, live to see another twenty-eight. Okay. With that said, we're gonna move on to item number ten, which is consider the approval of ordinance number two oh one seven dash oh five dash nine, an ordinance amending Chapter Eight Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code Ordinances of revising and augmenting code provisions regarding when traffic impact analysis is required. Douglas, would you please speak on this one, please?
This was, um, it dawned on me when we were leaving that what if, uh, the current Basis, who has the current lease of these buildings of the church, what if they suddenly decide to turn around and they wanna buy it? And, uh, I asked their attorneys if the present ordinances cover that, and they said, well, we're ninety-eight percent sure. This is to make sure it's a hundred percent certain, and that's the, why we have the revision today.
Thank you, Douglas. Uh, Mr. Brennan, did you have any comments, or the city manager?
Uh, Mayor, the, the first shot at it that we approved already, uh, required a TIA when a new or remodeled facility, uh, which would generate, uh, a more, uh, what is, was anticipated generated more than a hundred peak hours of trips, uh, so forth, would require, uh, review or consideration by the Architectural Review Committee. Uh, and, uh, based on Mr. Gregory's comments, which we added in, not only is it when a new or remodeled facility is involved, but a change to use our owner, uh, comes forward, which would increase traffic by more than a hundred peak hours of trip. We're, we're trying to cover every, you know, uh, possibility or thought that, that might arise. It's, you know, it's harder to project the future because you're never sure what's gonna come next, but, uh, we're trying to tie it down as closely as, closely as we could. And then the, uh, the section on the public and private schools that the, was originally recommended by the engineer, uh, just mentioned new schools, new public and private schools, and, and consideration the fact that somebody could relocate a school, uh, and not create a new one, but just relocate one in the city, that, we added the word relocated as well as new would cause, uh, uh, application of this school regulation or school standards that are mentioned here.
Okay, thank you. So when you're...
I wanna thank the city attorneys for this verbiage. It's a lot sharper and a lot clearer. Thank you, Mr. Brennan and Mr. Henry.
Just one question for me, and then we'll, we'll see. Is, in your professional opinion, are we, are we in a position now with everything in place in our ordinance to protect our citizens from any type of thing, over a hundred cars, whether it be a school, a, a jack-in-the-box, uh, whatever it might be?
Uh, is, we're, we're doing it as well as we can figure out a way to do. Yes, Mayor?
Thank you. Okay. So we have item ten. Uh, would someone like to...
I so move the motion to approve ordinance number two zero one seven dash zero five dash zero nine.
Do we have a second on that, please?
Right.
Second? Okay. Um, I don't think we need any discussion unless y'all are just frothing at the bit to do it. Okay, good. All in favor? Thank you very much. It is unanimous. Now, let's go on to item number eleven. That's consider approval of resolution number R two oh one seven oh five oh nine, a resolution by the City Council of the city of Castle Hills in support of legislation. That would amend section twelve point one oh three C and add subsections D, E, F of the Texas Education Code. Kurt, will you explain that item, please?
Sure, Mayor. Um, last week, um, Councilman Trevino and I traveled up to Austin to testify before the Texas House, um, Education Committee. The prior week, we went up to speak with the Senate, um, uh, Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, uh, and this is legislation that Councilman Trevino has been working with, both Senator Menendez's office, as well as, um, I'm gonna forget his name. Come on, help me out.
Representative Bernal.
Oh, Representative Bernal, sorry. Um, Representative Bernal to, uh, to close the loophole that we found in the Texas Education Code for, um, charter schools, uh, to be able to avoid zoning requirements in municipalities less than twenty thousand people. Um, and it amends the language, just in a nutshell, to say that if that municipality is surrounded by another municipality of a million people or more, or a county of a million and a half or more, um, that it wouldn't, the exception would not apply to them. Uh, so it'd give them an exception from the exception, so to speak. Um, and this is important because, you know, a city like Castle Hills, uh, we would receive very little benefit from this to our residents, um, and we would bear the burden of the cost, as we've heard enumerated time and time again by residents, as well as our council members. So, um, so we went up there, uh, the bills are still marked pending, but it was a great opportunity for our voice to be heard, and again, kudos to Councilman Trevino for, for putting that all together. I joined him on the trip, and, uh, when we went up, uh, to speak to the House Committee, um, Gene Kelly and Peter Bella, two of our residents, were also there, took the time. And let me tell you, it's about a two-hour commute to Austin from Shirts, um, at that time of the morning. It's crazy. I can get to, anyway. It's, it is crazy what the traffic is like, and, um, uh, so for them to go up there, for Councilman Trevino to set this all up, I think it's, it, it deserves some recognition and a resolution, uh, passed just to, uh, just to say that we're in favor of those actions. So...
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, Councilman Trevino, for, for going up there. In fact, I heard he did such a great job. Maybe we ought to, in the future, uh, have him as our, uh, Austin liaison, but that's something you guys can decide later. That wasn't supposed to be funny. That was... Um, let's get something on the table, and then, uh, I believe there's a person that would like to speak on that. Amy, would you like to say a few words in behalf of, uh...
You may wanna amend the resolution to where you're amending section twelve point one oh three to add subsections D, E, and F. Having the C, you can't have a subsection D, E, F under a subsection C. It would actually be just another section of twelve point one oh three of the code, just so your resolution is clear.
Run that back again. I was trying to follow you. What is it that you...
Okay. So if you look at it, the resolution is written on the agenda, is to amend section twelve point one oh three subsection C to add subsections D, E, and, and add... Oh, so you're, so, oh, never mind. Excuse me. You, are you amending C and adding subsections, or is the amendment just adding D, E, and F?
The intention of the resolution is to approve an amendment of section twelve point one oh three C and to add sections, subsections D, E, and F.
So it changes section C, too? That's, that's, that, if it's only adding a D, E, and F, then you wouldn't have to have the C, but if there's actual language in section C...
Yeah, there's an amendment to C also, as we understand it in the legislation that's proposed.
There's here.
Okay.
Can you repeat that again, Mr. Brennan?
Okay.
Well, it's my understanding that the proposal, or in the legislation proposed, that section twelve point one oh three C is being amended, and then in addition, subsections D, E, and F are being added.
Okay, so I see you're probably changing C to include the...
Is that correct? I believe so.
Yes.
Counties. I apologize then.
No problem.
Mayor, at a, at a curiosity, since we don't, since I don't have, uh, twelve one oh three C or D, E, or F, I would be curious to see what is amended and what is added.
This is just a recommendation, right, folks?
Yeah.
I mean, just a resolution?
Well, you know, what it does in subsection C, uh, remember, subsection C was the one that said if there's, if they're in, if a charter school's in a city of less than twenty thousand, it's not subject to the municipal zoning ordinance governing public schools. And so the amendment to C says, uh, it stays the same, except as provided by subsection D, which, uh, so that's the amendment to C, and then there's new sections D, E, and F that, uh, clarify that, if y'all wanna look through it. Yeah, you've got, you're gonna have it in front of you.
Okay. So where are we at?
The language in both the House and the Senate, um, bills is the same, so Kim's just provided those two. If you wanna read what the verbiage is there.
Mr. Brennan, can I ask you a question while the rest of the council is reading this?
Sure. I'm sorry. Sure.
And looking at section E, does that open the door to Basis where it is right now in rental? Sure reads that the way it looks like.
Well, uh, I think E is, you're talking about E, right?
E. It's a municipality exempt from the application of subsection C under section D, may not impose a municipal zoning ordinance governing public schools on an open and Roman charter school that was located in the municipality on September one, twenty seventeen. That's Basis.
I, I think what the intent of that portion of the legislation was, was so that it would, it would grandfather those schools that were already in a municipality and in a zoning area that, that may not be, um, amenable to that function. So it's, this was, this was meant to protect charter schools, uh, from being thrown out of places. So this would prevent, uh, the municipality from going back and saying, ha-ha, look, you, you're no longer allowed here because a zoning ordinance doesn't apply to you, because a zoning ordinance is now applied to you. So that was, it, that was part of the legislation. As you know, Councilman, anything that you go, that you push forward as legislation, um, gets modified so that, you know, all the different interests that are tied into that, um, are represented. And so this is probably something that was inserted into the language in order to get it through the Education Committee or get it past the Intergovernmental Affairs. It just, what it's saying is that the legis, this legislation wouldn't change things that were already in place, and they were anticipating that date to be, um, September first, two thousand seventeen.
Well, is it, but as I read this, and I'd like Mr. Brennan to comment on this, I read this, this basically exempts Basis, because they are here now. They are renting now. So they are located in our municipality on September first, twenty seventeen.
It, it does, you're right, Councilman, it does not impact Basis and the lease with the First Baptist Church at all. What it does is prevent another school, a Great Hearts or another charter school, from coming in and doing the same thing on that property.
Mayor, may I?
Of course.
Uh, Mr. Gregory, the way that this was crafted was, we, it exposed a weakness in our zoning, so I worked with our state rep and our, uh, state senator to make sure that we could pass a piece of legislation that would protect us going forward. This is not specifically aimed at Basis.
Mr. Brennan, according to the agreement that we passed, if Basis decides not to locate... First of all, do they have a firm two-year window that they can stay here as long as two years, even though they may leave in a half a year?
The maximum time they can be, maximum time they can be here is the two years.
Okay. So they can do, they can leave within that two years...
This really is going to apply to some other school that may try to come into the city after September 1 of 2017.
So you're saying this in no way, shape, or form, can basis use this to stay longer?
No, sir. They can't. I mean, they're bound by their contract.
By the settlement agreement.
Yeah, the settlement agreement. Councilman Gregory not convinced, but they are bound by it.
I think they want to get out of here as fast as possible, personally. So with that said, where are we at now? Did, who brought up that question? Okay, good. Okay, so now we're on the, Amy, you okay with all of that? Well, I'm glad we got a lawyer now. Okay, so let's make a motion, please. On item number 11, please. It's not late enough to be giggling like this. Okay, do we have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay. Do, motion what? On item number 11?
That we approve this resolution.
Thank you so much. 2017-05-09. Second? We got a second for Mr. Paul?
Before we vote on this, is it better for, to have a unanimous vote, or forward with one abstention? Which is better for the city?
It, it really doesn't matter. I mean, if the motion carries, it carries, and they're not going to count votes on how much, you know, there was, it passed it, or didn't pass it.
Okay, now I got a question. Why in the world would you extend, why would anybody ex-
Abstain.
Abstain?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure in my mind that this slams the door on basis suddenly-
Charter schools.
To come back, some, well, charter schools, to come back later and say, "We were exempt under this provision. We were grandfathered under this provision." And in we come again, and we're back to the same routine, and they may be in another part of the city. We're exempt from this, and we're exempt from that, because, we're exempt because we were covered under this when it was passed. Is that wrong, Mr. Brennan?
Yeah, I think that's wrong. The, the contract was made before this law was enacted. This law hadn't been enacted yet. If it gets enacted-
The contract said that they could come back, but they wouldn't come back in a residential area. So they could come back to the city.
No, I think, I think the contract is they, they can't come back, yeah, to the city in a residential area.
In a residential, but they could come back in a non-residential area.
Possibly, yeah.
Then they have to deal with the ordinance that we passed on May 1st. Would they?
Yes, yes.
Well, why is it-
Because their application's withdrawn now.
Why would they have to deal with the ordinance if they're exempt, you're giving an exemption to them right here?
Well, I, I, I don't think that's what's happening here. I don't think they're going to be exempt.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry I asked the question. Let's move forward on the vote. Okay.
May I, may I ask a question, though, too?
Keep it short, under 20 words, okay? Please?
20? Ooh, that's hard for me. Those words don't count, by the way. Mr. Trevino, since you spoke, I guess, I believe in favor of this, of this, of trying to move this bill forward, I would, I was curious how the, it was the Senate, correct? Or the House this time, correct? I'd be curious what they're, since I haven't seen the tape, I was wanting to know how they received this, and is it indeed moving forward? Is it, is it going to go to the floor, or is there any indication whatsoever?
So there's been a bit of an update. As of last week, it was passed out of the House Committee unanimously, so it will go to the local and, local consent agenda committee calendar. So that's where we're at right now.
Thank you. And as a follow-up with Mr. Brennan, thank you, Mayor, for indulging me.
You're welcome.
You know, Mr. Gregory brings up some, some, some good considerations. I think he's, I think he's a little fearful. He keeps on bringing up basis. I, for one, know that basis does absolutely, in no way, shape, or form, want to be in this town. That's been made very clear. They want to get, they want to get the heck out of here, okay? We, we worked with them to give them an avenue, I think, to, to allow them, to allow them, allow their board, allow their supporters to help them get out of here. I, for one, need to move them out, because I want my kids, personally, because both my kids go. I want them to graduate from a real school. I don't want, I'm not going to stand for, nor am I going to support a school that's in a temporary building forever. No way. And, and most parents of this caliber, which is the caliber that goes to basis, is not going to want that either. And so, Douglas, I do believe that, that the concerns you have, and that in regards to basis, are somewhat unfounded. We have a settlement agreement. They are definitely moving on. They definitely want to get their building, and they're going to support it. The TEA will not, as far as I know, and Kurt or, or Mr. Brennan can, can comment, that the, that the TEA will poll their, their certification if indeed they don't have proper facilities. Am I, am I correct?
That's my understanding. Yes, sir.
And so, once the TA polls it, they're dead in the water. And they cannot come in.
No money.
No money. Exactly right. And no authority, for that matter, too. The thing I like about this is it stops any other charter school, or a school like that, from coming into, coming into our community. And so I see this as valuable. There's a little bit of, a little bit of give and take, like there are in all, in all legislation, especially at that level, but I see this as a, as a way to help protect our city and other small cities like ours, in, in metropuses like, like we're in. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go. Can, okay, let's go. No, no more. Okay, so with that said, do we have a motion?
I did already.
Now, a second? All in favor? Thank God. Uh, okay. It is now done and passed. Okay, the next one is announcements by City Council. Douglas, did you have anything to say? Thank you. Mr. Paul?
No, I have-
Thank you. You didn't want to say anything about the gentleman on Fox Hall, or anything like that, Mr. Dunno, or, did you know him? Okay, good. Mr. Paul, did you have anything to say? An engineer, and a, okay. Mr. Squire, did you have anything briefly to say?
Do I have to keep it under 20 words, Mayor?
10.
10 words? Okay, well, I'm going to fail miserably at that, so. Obviously, this is my last meeting, and, and I, for one, you know, I was, I was writing a prepared statement for this, and it would not be under 20 words, for that matter, but I kind of threw that out the window, basically because I just wanted to thank the opportunity to serve and to help my city. I've given, you know, four years of my life to help my city, my passion being our infrastructure. I continue to strongly support the continued progress we make on our infrastructure. I support a, a very strong, ongoing maintenance plan, and, and Kurt, I, I, I believe you do concur with that wholeheartedly. And I think, I think as a citizens, we need to demand that this city continues to perform maintenance on existing streets, and continue to work forward on renovating the streets and drainage as, as we move forward. And so I do ask that, 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 that continue, even though I have, I'm stepping away. I'm looking forward to seeing, and, and I believe it's going to be, and I, as I know, it's going to be Ms. McLean, I do, I look forward to seeing you, you help progress this spot, and bring your skill set to the council, and reach out to the surrounding communities, and try to do what we've done, you know, in, in front of and behind the scenes in supporting our city. Looking forward to, to seeing that move forward. I thank, I thank the lively debates that we've had, some disagreements and, and agreements, but I think they've all been just, and I think they've been true, and I'm glad to be able to participate in, in these, over these last number of years. And I appreciate every one of my, every one of my aldermen that I've had a chance to serve with, both past and, and current. So, again, it's, it's a humbling experience. Did a lot of things I never expected I would do in this position, but I'm grateful for having the opportunity to serve and, and serve for my community. So, thank you, to one and all.
Thank you, John, for that. I'm sure we'll give you a plaque or something. Okay, with, Matt, did you have anything, please?
Sure. This also is my last meeting. Decide not to run for reelection, to focus on business and personal life. I, it's been an honor to serve my community. We've accomplished a lot, and I think we're poised with our new city manager and our staff all in place to, to move forward in the future. I'd like to see, kind of became clear to me with our infrastructure needs and stuff of the past, that we are, we are pretty tight if we don't get San Antonio to own up and help us fix our issues in the future. And over the last year, I've kind of got the, if I had to state on council, one of the things I'd like to see addressed is we get some teeth into San Antonio, and they become, get some fear about us, and that we're going to mean what we say, and they start addressing our issues. And so, I'd like to see us make some news. But thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Matt. We will be getting you a plaque, for sure. Mr. Trevino, did you have anything to say before we try to move forward?
Yes, sir. I just want to take a second and thank our first responders. I was in a situation where I needed their service earlier this month, earlier in April, and they were there. Against my poor judgment at the time, they insisted that I seek further medical attention, and I just wanted to thank them for everything they do. I'm indebted to them. And I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank Councilman Squire and Councilman Daggett for everything they've done. This can be a thankless job, and I appreciate everything that they've done to get us to the point they're at with their unbiased and level-headed decisions, and I look forward to our new cohorts joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Also, with the first responders, thank you for saving Mr. Trevino's life. It was a, it could have been a bad situation. It really could have, and we need him around here. Okay, I promised to keep this under 45 minutes. A lot of people have, during the election process and everything that went along with that, have been talking about the Young Families Group. I'm going to, I'm going to call a meeting that is a mayor-appointed group, that is a mayor-appointed committee. We're up to about 50 young families now. We didn't put an age limit on young, so if you're, I guess, alive and have a family, you can attend these meetings. Yeah, young at heart is what I meant. So I, I would encourage this, because these, these people are really wanting to do something. They're wanting to get involved. They're, they're our next generation of people who are going to be running this city. Thank God. And we, we really need them to feel like, like they're wanted. So I'm going to put out a, you know, a notice of when, when we're going to call that meeting. The second thing I would like to talk about is Judy Crawford. Is she still here? No? Okay. Judy came up with a fantastic idea, which stimulated some thought among some residents. And the reason that happened is everybody's got some books they got to get rid of. So I think I'm up to 1,001, is what my wife said. And, and so, besides having the Little Book Depot out there, I'm going to task council in the future to come up with a, I mean, the Little Book thing out there, I'm going to ca, uh, task council to come up with what we call Castle Hills Book Depot. And what that'll be is we'll take some space in this building, the way I see it, and actually turn it into a situation where you can drop a book, take a book. It's all going to be, uh, on the honor system. If they take 10 books and don't return it, it's okay with me. They can come to my house and take 1,000 right now if they want. But it's, I think that would be a good idea. And I'm going to get with people like Jackie Ackley, and, since she happens to be here, and, and, and other people to just sit down and get some ideas on, would they like a sitting room to, to read those books in? Would they like something to, I don't know, but my wife said, "Get those books out of the house fast." And that's a joke, actually. She, she, she came up with this idea, and I think it's a great idea, to be able to have a book exchange that's kind of free. Other than that, I think that's it, and what we're going to do now is we're going to go into executive session. It is now 8:31, and I would reserve the right to call the city manager into that session if we need to.
Means I've got to stick around, Mayor?
Yes.
Tim, will you read that agenda item, so we'll have that section out there?
Item number 13. The City of Castle Hills, the City of Castle Hills Council will convene into executive closed session to conduct a performance evaluation of the city manager's authorized by section 551-074 of the Texas Government Code. The time is now 8:31, and we will retire into that session. Well, I think since everyone's leaving, are you, is everyone leaving?
I don't know. If you need somebody to-
Bye, Amanda.
Do you want an audience?
Uh, well, if we're going to break into executive session, there's one, do you have the room set up over there? Oh, good. Okay, let's go over there.
If I leave, then you're good to stay here, Mike. Then I'll-
Amy has decided to wait in the hall.